All right, if everybody would grab a seat. It is 5:30 and we don't want to stick around too late tonight with the weather. I am going to call this meeting of Morton County Commission, the August regular monthly meeting, August 7th, 2025.
This conference will now be recorded.
Sorry, Lacy. First item on the agenda will be the Pledge of Allegiance. And we're going to have our 4H state-winning dairy judging team come up and lead us and then do the 4H model, so.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Edge my head to glare thinking, my heart to greater loyalty, my hands to larger service, and my health to better living for my club, my community, my country, and my world.
Thank you, ladies. You'll get, everybody will get introduced to them here shortly. Roll call. Commissioner Zackmeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash.
Here.
Commissioner Morrell.
Yep.
And myself, Commissioner Bane. So all commissioners are present. We also have Auditor Roan up here at the front, Sheriff Kirkmeyer, and State's Attorney Coppy in the back. Next will be the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting of July 22nd, 2025, the regular meeting of Morton County Commission.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the previous meeting of July 22nd, 2025. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have monthly bills and payroll. It was my month to do bills. Went through the bills yesterday, I needed a couple of signatures, which both got applied today. Other than that, everything looked good, so I move that we approve the bills and payroll.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to approve the bills and payroll. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Morrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash.
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley.
Yes.
Commissioner Zackmeyer.
Yes.
And myself, a yes. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a comment on?
Absolutely.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. There was a question on a bill that was brought up during our last commission meeting for walk and roll, and just wanted to let you know that we had reviewed this at the road commission meeting, and we went out and did a little more research afterward, and I believe that that bill is appropriate. We've, they're a highly specialized tire, and so I think we're, we're good to go there.
Okay. And we did approve it, right?
Yes.
It was just, you guys did some more research. Thank you.
They were a special tire that needed to be ordered. They are all smooth-tired. They weren't, no treads.
Nothing.
So it was a special tire that needed to be ordered.
Okay. Thank you. First on our agenda, Mr. Brent Exstrom with the Lewis and Clark Development Group. And he is online. Can you hear us, Brent?
Well, good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Well, I apologize for not being in person. I usually like to get picked on in person from Commissioner Zackmeyer, but I'll have to wait until another meeting. I was asked to be on a roundtable with Senator Hoven and HUD Secretary Scott Turner in Fargo here, so I had to run out here for this. I wasn't able to turn around and get back to you guys, so do apologize for not being in person. Hopefully, yeah, next year's schedules work out a little bit better. But I just wanted to touch base with you guys, give you, get caught up on what's going on, what happened in the session here at the legislature, and some of the new things that came out of that, as well as what we're doing at the, at the organization, and then talk a little bit about the county dues. So first of all, as you guys know, we do quite a bit of lending, and so those are in that, I believe you were sent a handout that had all of our lending numbers and all of that stuff, as well as the breakdown of how we are funded, so I won't go that. But what I will talk about is a couple of programs that came out of the North Dakota legislative session this time that could help you and your communities. And so the first one I'm going to talk about is the Rural Grocery Store Sustainability Grant. That was a grant that was approved by the legislature for communities under $4,500 for grocery stores to help them strengthen the food system. So they can do that for a number of different things that they can do. They can, they can upgrade their equipment, they can do, they can expand, they can do different things that they need to. So it's up to $150,000 for eligible expenses for these small communities. The caveat that the legislature put in is that all of those applications do have to come through our office. So any, so we did, about a week ago, we sent out postcards to every single grocery store in the 10-county area informing them of that. We also had this in our newsletter, and as well as our email blast and things like that. So if you are aware of any grocery stores out there that might want to, or need some repairs, or need some upgrades, things like that, have them get ahold of us. It is, the deadline for this to apply is September 17th, and I'll talk a little bit more about how we will actually be able to not only inform people of these things, but we'll actually be able to help them apply for it. The other thing that came out of the legislature was the Rural Catalyst Grant. This is a grant, again, for communities under 4,500. They appropriated $2.5 million, so this is a statewide grant, so it's going to be highly competitive. This one's a little bit more flexible. It could be anything within those communities, you know, education, arts and culture, health and wellness programs, different thing, anything like that, as small as maybe people want, you know, folks wanting to, to paint their fire hydrants, up to, you know, remodeling their community centers, things like that, are all eligible for that. The exact rules have not come out yet. The Department of Commerce is working on those. We hope to have those rules out here, and the applications for that will probably be about October. Again, those will run through our office. It's an opportunity for these small towns, these small communities within your county to revitalize their community. It is a matching grant. I don't know that they have the exact, the last I had heard, it was a dollar-for-dollar matching grant. I don't know if that's going to change for sure when the final rules come out. As soon as they do, obviously, we will be contacting all the city auditors and, and sending out information on this as well. So those are two grants that did come out of the legislature that I think will be helpful for our communities, both of which are going to be running through our office. The other thing that the legislature did is they, they actually funded, for the first time since we've been in existence, they actually wanted us to increase our capacity. All eight regional councils were awarded funds to increase our capacity to assist small communities in, in accessing state, federal, local foundation funds. So what we are doing at the regional council is, I am actually hiring, I have a position posted now for a resource development director. And, you know, in the past, the regional council's been really good about being able to, if somebody comes to us and say, hey, I got this project, and we, we let them know, hey, there's a USDA grant, that energy efficiency grant you should apply for, here it is. And so we give them the information. Well, most small communities, a lot of small communities, don't have the capacity, you know, they might have part-time auditors, they might just have part-time staff, they don't have the capacity to do that. So I'm hiring this resource development director that will actually be able to not only go out, help them identify those grants, but actually make the application itself, and then actually administer the application. So we're going to take that next step. So it's going to be, it's not fully funded by the state. We will still be funding some of that through our own operational dollars, but it's, it'll be, I think, advantageous for these communities that just really don't have that capacity or that expertise to go out and apply for these grants. And so this is going to give them the ability to call us, and we will definitely help them. We will walk them through it. We will help them fill out applications. We will review applications. You know, it'll be a little bit of a cost here, it's not going to be completely free, but it's going to be a lot less expensive than if you would go out and hire a consultant at 15,000 or $20,000 to do something like that, especially when you're applying for a grant that you might not get any money, right? So we're trying to work with the communities to be able to get them, to be able to access these funds on these programs that are out there. The other thing that we got going on that, that we did at the regional council, as you guys know, well, you're sure really well aware, the legislature capped your guys at 3%. And when we saw that, we went back to our board, and our board reviewed our budget, and they said, you know what? You know, 20, whatever, for the last 50 years, we were getting point, or two tenths of a mil. About 10 years ago, when the economy kind of crashed a little bit, we reduced it to .15 mil. So they said, let's take a look at our budget, see where we're at, see how we are as an organization. And they decided to reduce the mil levy that we were charging counties to .125 mils. I think, you know, to do that in an effort, you know, we, we've just viewed, you've got the counties as partners in what we do. We still need to have matching dollars, the dollars from the county dues match our EDA funds, they match other grants that we get, in, in order to be able to provide the technical assistance that we do with all of the, you know, with all the businesses that come in to help package deals and put stuff together. So we do still need to collect our funds, but, but we figured that, we looked at our budget, we figured we could tighten our belt a little bit and still be able to do what we need to do, you know, in addition to getting some of the funds from the state, which by the way, the state said this is not a replacement for county dues. That was clearly stated when we were talking to the legislature. But they did want us to complete, complete our, increase our capacity, and, and we can still do our job with a little bit less dues. So the actual dues this year for you guys, about $3,700 less than what you paid last year. So last year, I think you were at about 33,000, this year, you're at about 29,445. So it is a reduction in your dues. The board decided on that, and the board will keep it at that .125 mil until the board decides to change it. So outside of that, that's kind of what we got going on at the, you know, we do have a number of projects going in your area, in your county. We'll see how that goes. I've been working with Commissioner Morrell on a couple of different, on a, on a big project. Hopefully, it will come to fruition. I just actually talked to Debbie today, so I did get ahold of her as I was driving out to Fargo, as we move forward on a project in North Mandan. So hopefully, we can get that thing moving here in the next year. Other than that, like I said, I will open it up to any questions that you might have with me.
Commissioners, have any questions for Brent?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question for, for Mr. Exstrom. Brent, as you're working on that resource development director position, first off, that's a great idea because our Morton County communities could really use that resource, that asset that's out there. But do you also have plans to, administration fees for any grants that are, that are awarded? Or how do you plan to fund that?
I missed the very last part of that. My speaker's like really quiet.
If you were to, let's say, City of Belmont, as an example, were to petition for a grant, they receive it, would Lewis Clark Development Group also retain 3%, 4%, 5% for administrative purposes? Have you set that policy yet?
It would be dependent upon the grant. I think most of the time, we're not going to, we're not going to retain a huge amount of it.
Right.
If it's, you know, most of the grants, once you get them and you complete them, obviously, it's, it's done. A lot of the grants come in and they don't have that admin dollars in there. We're going to make it as affordable as we possibly can for them. So when that grant is done, it's not like, yeah, you get a $100,000 grant, we're going to keep 10,000 of it. We're not going to do that. If it, you know, we'll look at, if it's going to take, you know, 10 hours or whatever, we probably, you know, charge so much per hour or whatever to do that. But overall, we're not taking a percentage of the grant as, as like a finder's fee or anything like that, no.
Okay. Just as I communicate that and ought to answer that question, because they probably would ask that.
Yeah, that's, that's where the, that's where the state dollars can come in, because they will help pay for that administration, so we don't have to charge or take a piece of the grant. That way, all of the grant can go to the project.
Cool. Thank you.
Brent, have you heard anything more about the livestock development thing that we're working with South Dakota?
That is how it works. We are, you know, they're doing it in all, every county in the state that consulting company is, or just about, there's a couple that didn't opt into it. We are hoping to have that plan to you guys by the end of the year, and so they are in the process right now of formulating that. The last I had heard, they were working on service basins, and then we're next on the list, so they're going to be putting all that stuff together. So we should have that plan late fall of this year, but for sure by the end of the year. That's what we're being told by the consultants.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Exstrom? Okay. They're shaking their head no, Brent, so I think you're off the hook.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'm going to drive and not get in the storm, so have a good evening.
Drive safe. All right. Next up, we have the Morton County 4H Dairy Judging Team. Two of the four members, I should say. You guys want to come up to the mic? See if it's on. I don't know, it is dark, isn't it? Those aren't on. Seems dark behind us. All right, go ahead, ladies. You have to talk really close to that microphone when you're talking. It won't pick you up otherwise. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sophia Void.
Hang on, Sophia.
I don't think it's, might not be turned on.
Thank you.
Now it might take off on you.
Hello, my name is Sophia Void. I'm a member of the North Dakota 4H Champion Dairy Judging Team. This was my first year doing dairy judging, and I was really, I'm really grateful to have been on a very competitive and supportive team this year. I had a lot of fun at practices with all my teammates and helped learning from each other on how to judge dairy cattle and learning how to do something I had basically no experience doing, and improving my speaking skills on, and confidently speaking about something I didn't know a lot about. And I'm really grateful for the opportunity to be able to go to Nationals this fall and keep judging cows, which was really fun at the state contest, and I'm really excited for this fall.
My name is Kylie Wolf, and this is my, also my first year doing dairy judging, and I also thought it was a really good opportunity to do dairy judging, and it was really cool to be on the state champion team as my first year doing it. Nationals, I'm looking forward to it. It'll be a really fun experience. I'm excited to judge more competitive cows than what was at our state competition. I learned a lot just from starting dairy judging, and I'd like to see how much I've improved from the state competition going into Nationals, because the state competition, different cows than what we've been working out for practices, so I'd like to see how much I've improved. And I think it'll be a really fun experience and trip to go to Nationals. I'm really looking forward to it.
So, want to talk about the budget just a little bit, one of you? And Lacy's going to put it up. Just for everybody in the audience, I won't vote on this because I'm their coach. I'll run the motion, but I will not vote. So we leave the 25th of September, we don't get back until the 30th. Hotels are quite expensive down there, just to get in and out there, and we're going to need five rooms, so it's going to be an expensive bill. So did get some money from the premium sale out in New Salem this past week, a nice chunk for, to help us out. And this is actually the first group of people that the girls have had to get in front of and really speak, other than just me or whoever's taking reasons, so they did a pretty good job. Madison, Wisconsin is the World Dairy Expo, and probably the top 2% or 1% of the cattle in the nation show up there. So what they're going to be judging is, you're going to look at four cows and you're going to go, they all look alike? Now what do we do? And so that's where we're trying to build them up, and they can break them down and figure it out a little bit. So, you want to talk about the budget a little bit? Just, you can go through it, read a few things off.
So our total budget is around 11 and a half, $11,500. And we need a lot for hotel rooms down there, and meals, and the travel and getting down to Wisconsin.
Yeah, and we kind of got into it a little bit beforehand. This is the first time they saw that budget tonight. Jaden and I worked that up just this week. I can help them out a little. The per day, we're going to use the state rate, they'll get so much a day to, for meals, they either spend it or they have to spend their own money, however that comes out. But registrations and hotels and everything else, I think when we were down there four years ago with the other team, we had to raise about 9,000. It just keeps going up. And so they're here tonight just to let Andy pick on them a little bit and, and see if they want to give you some money. Like I said, I'll run the motion, I won't run, I won't let vote. Commissioners?
Nathan, do you know how much the state foundation?
1,500.
They give that much, the foundation does?
Yep. 1,500 from state 4H and 1,500 from our Morton County 4H Council.
Okay.
So that's a big portion of it.
Mr. Chairman, question for the groups.
Sure.
What is your total request? Is it for the full, basically 11,000, or is it something else that you're looking?
We did raise a lot of money back at the premium sale for the Morton County, at the fair this weekend. I'm, I'm not quite sure how much that was.
Yeah, whatever. I don't think we have 11,000 in our portfolio budget. We've, we've live bottomed extension at that point.
So if a local farmer would ask you, how does this competition further Morton County dairy interests? What would you tell them?
That's a hard question, Andy.
No.
Well, I think a team going to Nationals, especially since there's not a lot of dairy farms around the area at this point in time, is probably, spikes a little bit of interest in the area.
Yeah, I was looking at some of the competitions, about 10 to 12 cattle classes. What would be some of those classes?
So we judge anywhere from like heifers to like aged cows, which could be like five-year-olds or six-year-olds. And then like heifers would be your like yearlings, so we could have two-year-olds, three-year-olds, four-year-olds, and any age cows.
Kylie, do you want to talk about which breeds will be represented?
Um, it'll probably mainly be Holsteins, but we could probably have, there's many different breeds, like Arshires or Brown Swiss.
I didn't want to scare them yet, but you'll probably see all six breeds unless they have trouble putting a class together. Then they'll double up on either Holstein or Jersey. But yeah, we will see shorthorns, Guernseys, Jerseys, Brown Swiss.
Don't be scared, Sophia, it'll be all right.
We'll work them up to that as we go. One thing we didn't mention yet, there are two team members. One is at an anniversary in Midora tonight with her grandparents' 60th, and the other one was babysitting until 5:30, so she couldn't get here, but Bailey Coons from New Salem and Sheridan Ellingson from South Mandan. And Sheridan was the high individual in the 4H contest in the judging that day. So just came home with a baby bias and made out of hard coal. Kind of cool. So.
Mr. Chairman, final question?
Yeah.
Talks here on the documents about judging on the iconic color shavings. What is that?
So every year, they bring in like a bunch of truckloads of different colored shavings, like some years it's gold or red, or they just like dye a bunch of shavings one color, and that's like the color that represents the World Dairy Expo Judging Contest each year.
Well, sounds interesting.
And it's a big deal. They make a, there's an actual hour time where they announce what the color is going to be. They open the back of the truck, and the live bottom truck dumps colored shavings. You don't know what they are until then. It's a pretty protected secret. Anybody have anything else for the young ladies? I don't know what you guys got to say.
Just a quick comment. I just wanted to say thank you and congratulate you for your achievements so far and coming up and speaking in front of us. Good job.
Thank you so much for your time and for listening to what we had to say. Yes, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, the, the funds that are for this is about, you know, advertising and promotion of egg. How much is in the budget? And what is the total request? Is it, so that we know.
For Mr. Chair, for the line item. For that line item, as we're looking into next year's budget, it's also combined with conservation, so it's not an accurate separation of the, the two dollars.
Don't know if Dawn knows.
I'm looking at everything.
Our auditor's looking. So you can ask him what the amount is again.
Ask him what the amount is.
Yeah. They got one now.
So what is the amount you're asking again?
1,000.
Just 1,000?
I think 7,000's in that budget for extension.
Still, we're sure, but.
Yeah.
A couple more translations will do. Just to make sure we're not making them pay for much.
So we have a line item for promotion of agriculture that we have 3,000 budget, and we have not expended any of it.
So this would come out, out of this year's budget, 2025?
Correct, yes.
Because they go.
They're leaving in a month.
In a month.
A little over a month.
Yep.
A month and a half.
And Mr. Chairman, is there any other 4H or future farmers, anything else coming up?
The, for FFA contests would have been in June, so we should have had any requests from FFA side by now, if they wanted it. 4H, what other con, there's, there's range judging coming up for FFA, that's off, on its own. But yeah, I don't know, this one's asked, and I think the livestock team has asked. They're done for the year.
Mm-hmm.
And so is consumer choice done for the year?
They're done.
And there's 3,000 in the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be comfortable going 1,400, so that we still have some left in case we get another request.
Make that a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve $1,400 to the Morton County 4H Dairy Team for their competition in the national conference in Madison, Wisconsin.
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to spend, or to give the dairy judging team on their trip to Madison, Wisconsin, $1,400 from the promotion and, and education budget. Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to invite the team, when they return, that they give a presentation back to the question of what they learned.
Yeah. Maybe we can get the other two here.
Exactly.
Make it their turn, right? We will, we will keep that in there. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for coming, girls.
Thank you, girls.
Send me a text on your jacket sizes. All righty. I don't see Natalie.
Natalie's on her way, but she's not here.
Well, John, that means you get done sooner. I'm not going to wait for her. Thank you, Lacy.
Okay, good evening, good evening, Commissioners and Auditor Roan.
John.
It's not, you're not into it.
They turned it off. Yeah. It's okay, Kylie.
That's, that's called being efficient.
Is that better?
Yeah.
All right. All right, I'm before you this evening with three items. First one is to execute a gravel pit lease. Not a pit release, but a gravel pit lease. We have been doing some negotiations with Vern K. down on his property, and we've done some exploration, and we feel that there is a good source of gravel down there. It's down south and west of. It's down south and west of Fort Rice. Uh, we believe that we could probably crush around sixty thousand cubic yards next year. That would be our primary pit for our crushing next year. And, uh, we would have the lease valid until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven, just in case something happens and we go someplace else. They'll, or, you know, whatever may happen. We do have two years for, uh, rough, almost two years on that. And the other thing is, um, it's in the southeast. It's not in an ideal location, but it's, it is gravel. And with the, uh, difficulty we're having in finding gravel.
It is gravel.
Believe this would be a good opportunity. Uh, we would have the royalty at two dollars and fifty cents a yard. Crop damage if needed would be sixty-five dollars per acre, and this is a budgeted item for gravel. It'd be part of our gravel crushing, the royalty and the, uh, crop damage. So with that, I'd be open to any questions you may have.
Commissioners, have any questions for John on this?
Yeah, John, uh, you talked sixty thousand cubic yards. Is that, uh, that be the total over two years or are we talking?
No, we would, we would move in one time and do sixty thousand. So we believe we can get that. We're not sure we can go much beyond that at this point, unless we find something once we start removing overburden.
You believe the resources are limiting there?
And if it turns out we have more, then we have the opportunity to crush some more in twenty-second since we have the, we would have the, uh, lease until December of twenty-seven.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for John?
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for motion?
I am ready.
Okay, I, uh, moved to authorize the highway department to execute gravel pit lease for the Vern K. pit, uh, commencing on January first, twenty twenty-six and running through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to authorize to execute gravel pit lease, which expires in twenty twenty-seven. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
All right. The next item is a temporary construction easement purchase for the, we have a bridge that is in final design south of Elmont on County Road eighty-six. And, uh, this bridge is, uh, going to be removed or replaced with a box culvert. And, uh, the, given the geometry of the location and profile, we decided to leave the, uh, put the box back in the same location. And given the amount of traffic on this road, we are going to, uh, put in a, uh, bypass. And this temporary easement is for that bypass. There's enough right-of-way on each side of this, uh, the existing bridge that we don't need any permanent right-of-way for the new structure, but we do need the, uh, temporary easement. In your packet is all, are all the documents, since this is federally funded, we use not only our north, our Morton County minimum standards for new construction, but we also use the NDDOT standards and national standards for both design and for acquisition of the right-of-way. Due to the small quantity of the temporary easement, it falls under our three hundred dollar, um, minimum. And, uh, so the total cost of this easement is three hundred dollars. And this is a budgeted item for this project. I'd be open to any questions you may have.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions on this item? If not, I would accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the payment for a temporary construction easement for a total of three hundred dollars needed for the replacement of bridge number thirty dash one-two-eight dash one-nine-point-zero. And it's located one mile south of Elmont and the easement is for, uh, the temporary bypass.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of temporary construction easement for a bridge replacement thirty dash one-two-eight dash nineteen-point-zero, being designed by Sovere Engineering. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
All right. My last item tonight is approval, uh, requesting approval for the contractor low bid for our special assessments. Starting last fall, we've, uh, been working on four special assessments in different subdivisions. And, uh, by combining all these, we were, uh, were able to increase the quantities, reduce the mobilization so the contractor would only come in one time. And, uh, we had a, we bid it, accepted bids yesterday. We, uh, had a, uh, engineer's estimate of one million, five hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars. And we received two bids. Four contractors actually requested plans. Two of them, Northern Improvement and Strata Corporation submitted bids. And our low bid is, uh, Northern Improvement with a bid of one million, two hundred seventeen thousand, nine hundred eighteen dollars and eighty cents, which was pleasing to see that, that far below our original estimate. Because our original engineer's estimate was also based on all of the combined petition estimates. So every one of the petitions will come in lower than we had originally estimated. Then I also liked the fact that Strata bid almost exactly what our estimate was, which kind of make, gives us some validity for our, for our estimate. So with that, uh, in your packet, you do have a tabulation of the, the bids comparing the engineer's estimate to the bid of Northern Improvement and Strata Corporation. And then the second item in your packet is all the, uh, the bid and then the breakdown for each of the, uh, subdivisions. And with the petition estimate and then underneath the bottom is, is the difference. And, uh, that, uh, each one would be, uh, reduced. And, uh, I submitted all these or sent this to the road commissioners, did not hear any feedback. And I did not expect much because of the, uh, the difference between the estimate and the low bid. So, uh, uh, when we do have our next meeting, we'll present it for a formal motion after any discussion that we may have at that point. But as I said, yeah, I was very pleased with the bids and I know there will be a lot of people who are looking forward to get this work done and getting it done, uh, below what we had originally estimated in the petition. So with that, I'd be open to any questions you may have.
Um, Chairman, John, do you have a estimated timeline on this so I know when I need to get the loans from the bank?
The, uh, the calendar completion date is October fifteenth. They plan on starting, uh, probably the week after Labor Day.
Okay.
So we're, we're talking the second week of September with all work done by October fifteenth.
Okay, so loan proceeds may be the end of September, first part of October.
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioners, have any other questions?
Uh, the only question I have, uh, Mr. Seiki is, is there, uh, do you have any insight on why I've only received two bids back?
I cannot say definitely. Um, one of the bids is, or one of the contractors that did request plans was Central Specialties out of Alexandria, Minnesota. And, um, my opinion is they do have a lot of work going on. They're working on the interstate east of town. And, um, they do have some other work in the west and they did pick up our Summit Street in Hebron. And I just think after, because they requested a, a plan holder's list and I think a lot of them looked at it and they saw, uh, both Strata out of Bismarck and Northern Improvement. And I believe they probably did not think they could be competitive based on their location and the, um, what they would have to bring in. The, the fourth one was another bidder that came from St. Michael, Minnesota. And they didn't even request plans until Monday. And so I believe they just didn't have the time to properly review the plans, visit the site and make a, uh, a good estimate or a good bid. And in the past, it's been almost every time we've done this, whether it's a special assessment or our frontage road or any other asphalt, it's basically come down to these two contractors since they're local. Because a lot of times we just don't have a lot, a big enough project to, uh, attract any other bidders from even outside the area. I was surprised we had the request for the plans for the two that did request. So what concerns me or not really concerns me, but I'm curious, is the difference in price per ton of asphalt? With Northern Improvement bidding ninety and, uh, Black River, a hundred and fifteen. You know, that's, that's a significant amount on the single biggest quantity item on the contract, so. Which accounts for the difference in the two bids.
Mr. Chairman, um, the, on the second sheet, John, that gives the breakdown of the special assessments.
Yes.
Will those subdivisions receive this sheet? So that they know what it's approximately gonna cost? Are they gonna know? Are they gonna think that they were gonna have to stick by that sheet? I know that the special assessment committee will meet.
They will meet. When they, when we had all of our public meetings, I did advise them if the bids come in lower than what we had estimated, uh, the, uh, amount they're assessed will be lower. But at the time, I did not know how much. I mean, I definitely can, what I can do is contact the sponsors of each of the subdivisions. Uh, I could put it in a letter. That would be probably two hundred letters I'd have to send out to everybody.
I was just wondering.
So, um.
Put it out there, just let them come, if they want to see it.
The only, the only thing that I also am concerned about, if I do something like that, there is a potential that there may be more patching involved. We may have to add gravel to the base. So if, even if I send it out and we base it off that amount, there's a potential that it could be somewhere between that amount and maybe a little bit more. That's why I would be reluctant, but anyone who is interested are, they certainly can call me.
Okay.
And I'd be more happy to talk about it and discuss, you know, if there's other potentials that could change it. Certainly can do that. The other thing is they can contact me, uh, to get the telephone number for the, uh, project manager if they wanted to have some asphalt work done, um, in there for driveways, for example, or something like that. Because right now, there's no better time to get that kind of work done than right now.
So you have that project manager for?
Yeah, Bryce Rader.
For, for Northern Improvement and then you could give it to whoever.
Yep. And I, and I've already received questions from, uh, there are a number of the residents. Primarily timeline, when it's gonna be bid. Those are the biggest questions. And then, um, if they would be able to contact the contractor to have driveways paved and that sort of thing. So I, I have received some calls and like I said, I'm, anytime they have a question, they can just give me a call.
Okay.
John, I, I support your stance on, you know, not sticking to a, a hard dollar amount. We have a quote here, everything else, but there are some change orders that inevitably come with, with things.
Correct.
And, uh, and we want to do it right and I'm sure the landlords want to do it right. The other thing is they will get into the inevitable, can you do my apron and can you do this and those things? So. Yeah. I think I support your stance on that.
Right. And like I said, it's, it's a lot easier for me to handle it on a, on a case-by-case than just trying to tell everybody at this point, this is what it is. Cause it is difficult to do it. Cause there's never been a project unless you bid one lump sum and that's all they're gonna pay. There's never been a project that's come in at the contract amount. Cause there's always something that happens. And it's not always that it's an overrun. There could be things that, that are reduced as well. So.
And, and with the reduction from the engineer's estimates here, uh, I, in my mind, there's no danger of, no danger of us ever getting to that threshold.
No, there is not.
Where, where they could protest out or, and I say could, it's their land. They can protest out if they wanted to, but this is, they've, uh, they've opted in.
Right. But yeah, the, we, yeah, we're typically on a project like this, if it does go over, we're talking a few percentage points of the, uh, of the bid, so.
Any further questions for John? And I might be remiss, the two gentlemen in here, did you have something, any specific item you wanted to talk about tonight? We have this new public policy or public meeting policy that we have to follow. And so if, something that's on the agenda, if you had something, just let me know. Can you?
If, if that's what, well, what I.
Can you come up, if you, if you want to talk, come up to the mic so we state your name. You're doing, okay.
We won't know for sure how much it'll go down. I can give you an approximate amount because you can take what the difference is between the bid and what the estimate was and divide it among, or by the number of lots. And, um, so are you in enzels? Okay, so you're looking at, what is it, two hundred and some thousand dollars? Uh, that it's for the whole, for that portion?
It's two thirty-two, John.
Two thirty-two, then you divide that by a hundred and four, so you're looking, it'll probably go down about two thousand dollars from what we had originally estimated. Yeah, right. And, and so that, that's why I'm very pleased with the, the way the bid came in. Because, um, it's, it's a significant difference. And, uh, I figured everyone would be pleased when we got those numbers, so.
Any further questions?
Are you ready for a motion?
I am ready.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to accept the low bid of Northern Improvement Company of one million, two hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty cents for the paving or overlay of Montani. Enzo's second through the ninth Prairie Ridge Estates, Yellow Rose Estates and Howland Wolf Estates subdivisions. Special assessment numbers two-four-nine-oh, two-five-eight-six, two-five-eight-nine and two-five-eight-eight.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to accept the low bid from Northern Improvement Company of one million, two hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty cents for special assessment numbers two-four-nine-zero, two-five-eight-six, two-five-eight-nine and two-five-eight-eight. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, John.
Well, thank you.
John, before you, while Natalie's coming up, I have one question. Our, is the road commission and P and Z going to be adopting our policy that we adopted for the public comment period?
If you're adopting it for that, we will adopt it as well.
Just so, I'm just making sure we're all on the same page because if we're doing it here, they're gonna want to do something there too.
Sure.
And I think road commission, maybe a little less than P and Z. That's gonna get you a little longer, I think, sometimes, but we'll, we'll see how it goes. Okay.
All right.
And if there's, um, comments on how we can adjust that or make it better, just let us know, please.
Mr. Chairman, to address that question, Commissioner Zach Meyer brought that up at the Planning and Zoring Commission meeting and, um, we, it is a nice thing that it's limited to the agenda prior. Um, so, and we have public hearings on a regular basis.
Right.
So I think we should be able to accommodate that pretty easily. And, um, I think we discussed that, um, people would have to submit comment cards ahead of time. So we would know upfront, you know, what comments there are.
We might have to have a little bit of a grace period to get them in. People won't understand all this.
Right.
But, um.
We can explain it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Nope, thank you. Lenny's.
Okay, our first item is the Lenny subdivision. This is in the northwest quarter of section ten. Township one forty, north range eighty-four west. This is located about a mile and a half south of the Oliver County border, east of County Road eighty-four. The applicant is Darlene Lenny. Uh, they are looking to divide off just one residential lot in a, um, half, half-section, almost complete half-section. So there's one lot with a residence that's non-conforming and then there's a second, um, residence. And this subdivision would be creating a lot for this residence. So it's just the one lot in the subdivision. Uh, they're creating a access and utility easement to serve that lot. serve that lot. That current home does have Missouri West water and power. They're already served by utilities. So Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of a short-form subdivision and rezoning from agricultural to residential. And I can take any questions.
Commissioners, questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, we would approve the final plot of the short-form subdivision known as Lenny subdivision and zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential, as the subdivision conforms to the regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Land Use Code and conforms to the land use priorities established in the 2045 Comprehensive Plan.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the final plot of the short-form subdivision known as Lenny subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I see as you're hitting yourself over here.
I'm a bug.
Our next item is a land use code amendment for minor meat processing facilities. We had a number of public hearings for this at Planning and Zoning. We finally settled on just covering a minor facility, since it's very unlikely that we would get a large one in Morton County. So we're just going to deal with what's realistic for now. So this would set standards for a meat processing facility, also, you could call it a butcher shop, for processing of animal units, 24 or fewer per week. And this would change it. Currently, we call it a slaughterhouse in our code, and we don't have any standards for that use. It's currently only permitted by special use permit in the industrial zone. So this would change it so that it would still require a special use permit. We would have that oversight for each specific project, but could be permitted in both ag or industrial zones. We had consulted with Western Plains Public Health about septic concerns, did research about disposal, composting, talked to Department of Environmental Quality, all sorts of things. So we do this, the timing of this is coming. We have a butcher shop that has applied for special use permit. That application came in on the 4th of this month. So this won't officially apply to them, but I know that they have been very aware that we're adopting this. And our, you know, we can set conditions on that special use permit that would abide by what we have landed on here. So, but this will, this will guide applications in the future. So, pretty short, just a couple pages. And Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approving it, and I can take any questions.
Mr. Chairman, we did have also input from a retired meat inspector that was at one of our meetings. And so he gave us some good comments.
Yes.
To include. And he's a resident of Morton County, and he was able to help us with some of the details.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, just one comment. Ms. Chair, I really appreciate the effort and the work that's been put into this. And yourself, the entire Planning and Zoning Commission, there's a lot more to this than meets the eye.
Meets the eye.
Right. So I know there was a lot of work put in, and I always hate to push back on something that they've approved, but I think it was appropriate here. I wanted the special permit, a special use permit, and that's appropriate, I think, in this case.
Yes, for sure.
Ms. Chair, I got a couple of questions. Natalie, just looking at the site plan requirements. So referencing subsection B, structures, fences, waste management areas, does that include biological waste? Is that cataloged in with that as well?
So waste management would be.
Normal refuge.
Anything, anything, any waste product. So we do allow, in this, we do allow composting, although in most cases, they are probably going to wait for an outfit out of Minnesota to come pick it up. And we do require that they refrigerate waste until it gets picked up. But if they were going to compost, you know, then it would be where your, where your row's going to be. And DEQ does have standards for composting, you know, that they oversee. And, you know, there's, Cornell University has quite a thorough publication for standards for composting. And in North Dakota, we only require half a foot of cover, you know, whether it's cardboard, sawdust, straw, whatever on the outside. So that's all DEQ will inspect to. But we are suggesting to have a foot of cover, you know, so that's over and above, which DEQ said is fine. You know, they're not going to inspect to that, but that is in here as our suggestion.
Well, that plus the refrigerated for the biological, that's where my main question was driving towards.
Yes. So if their approach is composting, then we have standards for that, and they have to also permit that through the state. But we do specifically say in here, if they are going to be having the inedible waste picked up, it has to be refrigerated until it gets picked up. And it has to be picked up weekly.
Okay. Then another question is in the areas of, you know, requesting hard surface area. Is there any discussion as far as any stormwater management concerns? I know you got contours are identified as, you know, part of the initial submission.
Mm-hmm. So we, we ask them to identify, you know, special flood hazard area, streams, wells, that kind of thing. They don't specifically have to do a stormwater management plan. In this, like, in the case coming up, for example, they are breaking off a lot for the purpose of a butcher shop. And they're doing a stormwater management plan for that whole subdivision. But, yeah, we don't, we don't have them do it for this, I guess. Between Western Plains, that would be permitting the septic. And then between DEQ permitting for any kind of waste, if they were going to do composting. I guess we're leaving it up to them to cover their bases. And we're not, you know, we specify that they can't have holding areas. They can't hold animals for more than 24 hours, so you're not going to have large areas for that. And the square footage of a facility of this side is not that big. So.
And mostly would be permeable base.
Right. And you know, when, let's see, when we said, oh, and I mean, we're basically just identifying any infrastructure that exists. When we say areas of hard surfacing, in all likelihood, you're not going to have any unless you're in an industrial zone. But just on, that's typical for a site plan, not necessarily for meat processing in general, but just, where's your gravel? Where's your hard surface? Where's your fences? It's just kind of a typical thing you would have on a site plan.
Just seeing if that's being clarified for the applicants, too, then?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve Section 5-27, minor meat processing facility for the Morton County Land Use Code.
No, second.
Mr. Chair, 5270.
Yep.
Oops, I'm sorry, did I say wrong?
It's okay. It's on the front here, if that's right.
Oh, I was reading it off of here. 5-270.
Yep. That's what you said, I think. And Paul seconded, yes.
Seconded that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Morton County Land Use Code Amendment, Section 5-270, minor meat processing facilities. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
And then, so that's the end of my items, but I will give you a heads up. The Director Capture Land Use Code Amendment will be going for the second time to Planning and Zoning at the end of August. We didn't have that many changes last time, so I have a feeling it will be going to this board on, would be September 11th, I think. So just a heads up, that will be coming. And then we'll work on solar and data centers and all the other things.
Maybe we can be done by the end of the year, and so '25 just finishes it all.
That's, that's my goal.
That would be a nice goal. Okay, thank you, Natalie.
Yes, thank you.
Next, Sheriff Kirkmeier and Mr. Psyke on the weights and measures. Weight, size, width, and height restriction permits. Tape out wide and high.
Yes. As mentioned, we have this policy, 700-017, weight, size, width, and height restrictions, and for permits. And my portion of it is primarily the permitting side of it. And the one portion of the general policy is, we do use LoadPass for all of our over height, over width, and overweight permits, which has been a very, very successful system for us. And most of the, I would say, counties in North Dakota, for sure in the west, use it. So everything is very consistent all across the whole thing. The rest of the policy involves enforcement. So that's where Sheriff Kirkmeier got involved. We've gone through this several times through the road commission and discussed it. And I guess both of us would be open to any questions you have beyond what we, what a high level I've given you for the review.
Any questions on the weight, size, height, and width restriction permits policy?
We spent a lot of time on this.
Well, yeah, Commissioner, I can just add in on the point that, you know, this policy was looked at, and it was looked at probably taking some of that enforcement out. And I didn't think that was probably appropriate at some point. We did have the opportunity to get some hany scales and have them. But however, as a sheriff's office, we're not really, we're not set up and don't have the manpower necessarily to do a lot of weight enforcement at this point. But however, I wanted to make sure that if it comes to fruition down the road, that there is a policy on it. And, you know, that can be adopted or changed as we, as not, well, changed as we go along, if any changes are needed. But right now, it's just put in there. So there is a policy in place. But the mechanism of enforcement is not necessarily set up at this point, if that makes sense.
What we did talk about, Mr. Chairman, was that if we were going to weigh any trucks, we'd do it first as kind of an educational process to inform producers, farmers, to, and not find them immediately, but just to maybe give them some heads up that this could happen. And.
Yeah, good. Correct. It would take a little bit of education. It's not that the plan would be to go out there and, you know, do a bunch of enforcement. But I think a lot of it is probably to help educate, to help save the county roads. And that's the whole idea necessarily. Now, how that's all going to work out, or could work out, is not really laid out at this point. But the first thing was to get a policy in place. And obviously, the sheriff's office would have a separate policy for us for enforcement. But I wanted to put that in there so everybody knew, if you want to look at it, that's what the enforcement is. And that's consistent with what the state does and the Highway Patrol does as far as the enforcement at the moment, kind of the same guidelines. And that's who would actually certify the scales, when and if we use them, to that type of thing. But it's really start off as more of an educational thing to begin with, and then, I guess, progress from there as this goes along. But this is just to get the policy in place to, so if anything does move forward, that part is taken care of.
Assuming we get the support on this with the county commission, we didn't talk about this specifically, about the communication aspect of this. Either one, do you have any ideas on how to educate the public on this?
Well, it'd be something that we would have to get with probably the PIO and put some stuff out, information on it, you know. And, you know, this fall, I don't, I don't think there's enough time, or, you know, we don't have the manpower necessarily. But I think you'd have to set up an educational thing to where you come weigh the trucks or some of this when we get into a heavier time, you know, mainly on the county roads, because that's really what we're looking at saving and maintaining, if we can, on some of these trucks. So it's more of an educational thing that would need to be started with, in my opinion.
Yeah. And, you know, most, most people that are running down the road with semis understand that anything on a state highway, they're fair game to get pulled over and everything. But now we're talking gravel, we're talking about the county law enforcement being involved and everything. So it is a significant change, and I think everyone will accept it if we can articulate why we're doing this. And it's, I've seen the roads, and I know how they're deteriorating. And, but, anything we can do to educate the public would be fantastic.
That would be the main goal. And like I said, right now, there's really no plans in place, other than having the policy in place. So as this gets worked out, that it can be worked through at this point.
Mr. Chair, I think with the timeliness, because we're entering into the harvest season, obviously, there'd be a great opportunity to get, just pick on one example, is working with our county newspapers, Hebron Herald, Glen Olin Times, and not just a news story, but an actual paid, full-page, boom, here, information edit, and advertorial, the one consideration. And definitely mention that to our public information officer, too.
Yeah, something that's like in the Mandan News, you know, that type of thing. But right now, it's just to get it in place, and then we'll have to see how it goes. I mean, there's going to be no enforcement blitz, but we definitely want to educate all of the Morton County rural areas about how weights do affect roads.
Chairman and Commissioner Morrell, we actually, in the auditor's office, we pay the rural, the three rural newspapers a monthly amount, and we can publish as much as we want. So it would be no cost to publish in New Salem, Glen Olin, and Hebron. But you'd be paying big dollars in Mandan News, and I wouldn't even recommend putting it in there because nobody, I mean, there's more people that read those rural papers.
The readership is less than the other three.
Yes. So, I mean, it wouldn't cost us anything to put something in those three other papers.
And really, and that would be correct, because the goal is to hit the rural areas.
This would be a good opportunity to put a press release out, because I think some of the news outlets would pick up on that, possibly.
Yeah, but your Morton County news journal is going to be your big readership. They've been doing a wonderful job, so.
The three of them. Anyway, yes, definitely encouraged working with our PIO for the proper dissemination.
Mr. Chairman, would we be obligated to still post in the Mandan News because it's an official paper?
Yep.
But it's not an official publication that's required by century code, so you wouldn't have to.
Yeah, this is just.
Could you print it in the legal stuff as a policy?
It costs more to put stuff in legals than to put it in another part of the paper.
Okay. I asked. We got it covered. We'll get it out there.
I asked. And Mandan News, if you can get it published, sometimes.
Yeah.
I've thrown stuff out with youth groups that a month and a half after it happens, it might show up, and then you kind of go, it's over.
Yeah, and right now, it's just to get, you know, the policy in place, and then what would happen with it. Because, I mean, it obviously takes manpower, equipment, other things to do this, you know, which we, in the sheriff's office, is not necessarily set up for it at this point, you know. That's, takes other funding to do some of this. So, but the big thing is, is just to, I think even to get out there and educate, just to make sure that everybody's aware how that does affect it, and especially during this time of year.
That ends the spring also, when they're hauling grain to market.
They're still hauling.
I know, they're still hauling.
Pick a couple of roads on a particular day and just do a spot check, just so, again, awareness, number of things.
Correct. And. Correct, and, you know, to, to begin with, we'd have to make something with patrol, obviously, you know, to, to work that out, that, that type of thing for, for education and see who's, as far as deputy wise, who can.
Support it.
Be trained to do it and, you know, I guess, it has the.
You'd go out there for a day and stop about eight of them. Everybody in the county would know it happened.
That is, that is very true.
And they all talk, just get between Hebron and Glen Olin or right in that area, the whole works with no. Even if you didn't do a fine, it's just a warning, but next time we're gonna get you. And yeah, they'd know.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we adopt policy number 700-017 for weight, size, width, and height restrictions for permits and seasonal permits.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in seconded to adopt policy 700-017, weight, size, width, and height restriction permits and seasonal. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Auditor Rowan, weed board appointments.
Okay, we have two positions on the weed board that have expiring terms on August 1st, so they actually already expired, but the Flasher area and the New Salem area and both of the current members have submitted applications to be reappointed. And that is Elwood Barth for the Flasher area and James Bam for the New Salem area. And this would be a four-year term expiring 8/1 of 29.
I thought Jim Bam told me he wasn't gonna. Somebody must have twisted his arm.
He wasn't sure.
Because his wife told me, no.
Did someone else fill out?
Well, we do appreciate his, his comment for special interest.
I like that too.
To kill weeds.
Yep.
Yeah, Woody says control obnoxious weeds and Jim says kill weeds.
Just kill them.
Well, I personally know both of these gentlemen and I, I think they both do a good job. Both of them are good producers and represent the people of Morton County from their district on the weed board.
Is that a motion? Was that a motion?
Sure, unless Paul wants to do it since he's the portfolio.
Yeah, I can, I can do that. I move to, let's see, I'm gonna get them right here. I move to approve Elwood Barth for District 5, for lead board out of District 5, for a four-year term expiring 8/1 of 2029. Do we need to have it separate?
Nope, you can put them together.
And, and also James Bam out of District Number 3, New Salem, for weed board for four-year term expiring 8/1 of 2029.
It's been moved in seconded to appoint Elwood Barth to District 5 Flasher area weed board for your term and James Bam to the District 3 for your term from New Salem to the Morton County weed board. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, the next item is the preliminary budget. So the only change in the budget since the last meeting was I handed out a new sheet for the district court because if you remember when Center Incorporated came, they asked for a small increase, I think it was $3,600 more, from $6,000 to $9,600. So I just increased that and then that was the only change reflected on these summary sheets also. So our total budget is the $36,308,571 with a total property tax levy of, on the bottom right-hand side of that sheet that goes landscape, it's the $10,804,792 is the property tax levy. So you probably all are aware that we are no longer sending out estimated tax statements. The legislature changed that, so we've sent out those estimated statements for a number of years. So instead the treasurer's office will send out a notice to all property tax owners still, but it won't be an estimated notice, it's going to be just a notice stating, here are the times and dates, times, and places of the public budget hearings for all of the political subdivisions that are levying taxes on your property. And now it includes fire and ambulance, that estimated property tax always excluded those and then it excluded any city or school that levied under $100,000. So for instance, the city of Flasher, the city of Elmont, theirs was never listed on that estimated tax statement. And so I've been busy this week calling all the fire districts and letting, and ambulance and letting them know that they have to have this because I've never, ever had a public budget hearing before, so.
We got a pretty good decrease in the mills.
And that's due to the property tax, I mean, the sales tax.
Sales tax.
Yes.
So was this the preliminary tonight? If we have any questions on any part parcel in there, we can take it out yet.
Yes, you can. I mean, you can move money around, we, we can change anything in the budget as far as departments and so forth. We just can't change that tax, property tax levy is what we can't change.
After we approve it, correct?
It can go down, it can't go up.
Right, yes. But you can up the budget if, if there's reserves, most funds have a lot of reserves. So I mean, if something comes up, you need to up it or down it, I mean, you can change anything in the budget at this point until October when we approve the, the final budget. The only thing you can't change is just can't up the property tax levy.
The $10 million.
Right.
Question for Sheriff Kirkmeier, do you want to come up? I need some clarification. And the two, it's the two low-end items on your increase, the boat and the drone.
Okay.
So what do you have currently for a drone?
Right now we're using Mavic drone, DJR or DJI, they're Mavic drones. And they're, there's two of them, there's a Mavic 3 and a Mavic 2. That are the main ones at the moment that have better, I guess, a little better infrared and stuff on them. Then we have two others that are now outdated. So we don't really, they don't fall into the federal because you gotta have a remote ID and stuff on them nowadays, you know, to, to fly and that's, we don't have them with those and battery issues and they start, you know, deteriorating after.
So you're trying to replace two with one?
Correct. If we can get one, that would be great.
And that's what, no, yeah, you have one on here. Okay. And then on the boat, we go around on this one every year. I know we do.
Yeah.
Burley County has the dive and rescue team also, so I want you to justify it.
Yeah, that's fine. The boat is that we have the, the other, the pro line that, that up at the county shop. Basically, it's, it's a boat that is too deep for the river. So it would be, the plan would be that we could actually put, have a slip out on, on the river in the summer, but we don't have a boat necessarily that we could get out there and leave that would have access to the river when, when we do have incidences. Right now we work River Patrol with Game and Fish. So, you know, Bismarck PD, Burley County, we do, I'm not sure if Mandan PD has anybody that, that's assist, you know, on a grant that helps assist River Patrol on that. And this would give us the, the access to, to get on the river in a more quicker way, which is, which we do not have right now. That would be the plan is to try to get a slip for it somewhere so we could keep it out on the river, but we gotta have a boat that's suitable for that and for the response. And then you could also spend a little more time out there on, on the river as, as needed.
Mr. Chair, just, if I may, just an observation, again, as we look at car bodies.
Yeah, I mean, we have a new area that's.
There's a whole lot of traffic going up and down that north stretch.
Well, it's just, I'm looking at the budget and most states attorneys looking for a new position. Get it. Most everybody else kept pretty level and flat. And this one jumped a little bit and there's quite a bit there. I mean, we have your, your body cam stuff and, and that is 125 the first year and 80,000 each year after.
Yeah.
For first five years and just a couple other things. I'm just trying to figure out where, if, if it all fits into our grand master plan.
Yeah, the, the body cam is.
That's your priority.
That's the big thing because we.
And the siren, those two are, need to get up and running. Siren, sorry.
Yeah.
That Cape drone solutions, is that with the new one?
So Cape would be with the, so that would give us the ability to live stream, which.
With that new drone.
With the, yeah, it'd actually work with the other ones.
It would work with those two, okay.
So, but we'd need that to, to be able to, to live stream on, on some of this so you could actually, the drone would be out and we'd have the ability to, to look at that footage as, as they're actually flying.
Okay. Oh, thank you. I, yeah, like I said, we can go up or down here yet, or we can go down from here, but I gotta just pencil in things out in my head and see where we're at.
Yeah, just so you know, you know, as far as the body cams with, with that, it's a, it'd be a five-year contract, so, you know, with them, so it's gonna be, that's an annual cost.
This was a thought in my head. We start out with the body cam stuff at 125, next year it drops to 80. That's where you could add that boat in for 25 in one year and you really don't change your budget. See where I'm coming from?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I'm just trying to figure out how to best work it or if we just go with it and run.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's something obviously that we've, I've been dealing with for a while to try to get out and, and to get this done. So it would be good to, to do it.
Well, depreciation goes out on this one more every year, so I get that.
And, and I guess on the other, the, the point is, is that I think we can get the, the body cams, we, I got some demos and stuff coming up here and I, it all depends on who you go with, that, that cost range is all the way from maybe 100 to 120 the first year, you know, so it's hard to say at the moment, so that's why, why the 120 is in there.
Right.
Just to make sure we got it covered.
I get that.
And we're talking next year prices, not.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to start out short and then have to try and figure out where to get it.
Correct.
I get that. Okay, thanks.
Sheriff Kirkmeier, do you know anything about the boat that the fire department got? What that, what that purpose was?
That is to respond, the city you're talking about.
Yes.
Yep, that is to respond to the Black Marina Bay, Lakewood, that area in the, with the city responds to because they have no response either, you know, and there's no way that they respond and then other than waiting, you know, if it's any, that's all water rescue top, top stuff. There's no diving, no nothing with that, you know, I mean, that is, that's an initial response to get there quicker than we could ever put a boat on. And if we never have a boat on the river, it takes us way longer.
Okay, so do we have another boat besides the one that's sitting up at the county shop? I thought we had more than one.
Yes, there is a, there is another, there's a hurricane boat that is used, that is also used out on the river, but that is a inflatable and you don't want that sitting on the river all summer. That's, wouldn't be a good thing because one is it, you gotta keep it inflated, you know, and it's, it's not, it's, it's not good to, to leave it out there. It's a very, it's a good boat and it is used, but it's not, not a boat to leave out on the river.
Okay, so this one that you're talking about replacing is the one that's sitting outside in your.
Yep, actually we would.
In your lot.
We would sell that one.
So how much is that worth?
And then use that funding to get a, a boat we can use on the river, which, you know, these boats are anywhere from 30,000 to 40,000. I mean, it doesn't have to be fancy by any means, but it just needs to, you know, it needs to be lower profile in the water so it isn't, doesn't run so deep because of sandbars and that type of thing. And so it's more of like on a, on a fishing boat type of platform, you know.
That you're looking at.
That we're looking at, yeah.
So why do we have that other boat?
Well, the other boat was for the dive team and it was, that was by a grant, we received that back in 2013, 13, 14, that was on a, on a grant. And that boat was for the purpose of that, but the way, the way the river changes and the, the way the boat handles, that is a, it's a not, it's not a good boat for the river because of current. Now, you know, if we were up in the, the Big Lake, that'd be a good boat, you know, but that's not where our major response is at. And so what I'm looking for is something that's more maneuverable and more useful on the river at this point.
So could you trade both for one? Is the second one necessary?
Uh.
On it, you know, your honest opinion.
Yeah, I think they are because if you do any, any operation that, that you have to dive at or an extended period, you need more than one, you know, for manpower or for that type of thing, for going back and forth, you know, depending on the circumstance. But normally, you couldn't do it with, just with one, it makes it tough.
But can't we work with our partners across the river?
We always would, yeah.
Yeah. Wouldn't that be the.
And Game and Fish would always come to the.
Yeah, I mean, you got, you got Game and Fish and you got Burley County, depending on where it is now, does something happen in Sweetbrier, does something happen in Harmon Lake, does something, you know, that's the other issue, so.
Mr. Chair, the, if, I'm not a boater, but I understand the size of a keel.
Yeah.
And that's the bigger issue. You got too tall of a keel in too shallow of a water, you're not gonna get anywhere.
No.
Plus you gotta drop your motor down and again, you start, you start hitting sandbars, you start hitting whatever and then you, then you end up breaking your lower unit and then you got maintenance issues all over the place.
Yeah.
And that inflatable one, I would look at that inflatable one as not only as an aggressor when needed, but also for the case of the dives for that secondary.
Yeah, well, you need to, yeah, you have, that one you can dive off of better because you, you can go off the sides. This other boat is more the, the response to get out there, to use it for River Patrol that when we have, do have those issues because we get, you know, different reports of people stranded on sandbars and all that and, and we have nowhere responding to a lot, you know, to it at this point, so it's taking a lot of time and then normally we usually get with Game and Fish, but it would, it's the, all the point of everybody working together for the, for the common goal and, and right now we don't have the opportunity to put into that.
And if there is a need for additional resources, it'd be the simple mutually approach.
Correct.
And vice versa.
Well, absolutely, so, you know, a few years back, we had the, the plane go down in the river, I don't know if you remember, down by Fort Rice. Then there was also a, a boating incident down there that was a drowning. So those, those type of things in, in the river is a, is a whole different animal when you start doing, you know, those, those type of operations and it, it takes time and resources to do it.
Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
About Roden Bridge. John, do you have any comments about any of your needs on your, on the budget?
Chairman, Commissioner Buckley, I do have a comment. There may be some more revenue coming next year that I found a little loophole that I was made aware of.
Of course you did.
So I didn't think we were gonna get any of what used to be legacy fund, now it's flexible transportation because they said you have to levy, they've never had a requirement on the levy. They've never had a requirement on the, um, levy that you had to have, yeah, always said organized townships had to levy at least eighteen, which is the max a township can levy in order to get that, it used to be legacy fund. Um, but there was no restriction on unorganized, but all of a sudden they changed that. So we're not even getting the revenue that I had forecasted for this year because we don't levy eighteen on, on organized. So I was expecting not to get it next year, but I found a little loophole that, um, we're gonna be able to use, and we will be getting some, but I don't know exactly how much.
Would that have to be applied to our unorganized townships, or that just goes?
It just goes, no, because right now we have an unorganized road levy.
Right.
And we've always gotten money. Uh, we don't pay anything out of that fund, it just transfers into Roden Bridge. Since the whole county is unorganized that we take care of, it's, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
But if you look at the sheet too, I mean, we, we're starting next year with, um, if you add up the, the Roden Bridge, unorganized and highway distribution, I mean, that's three, four, I mean, that's over four million, and then we're forecasting to end the year with, uh, I think like one point one million. So we're using a lot of those reserves, so I mean, if we are getting some of that revenue that don't have forecasts, that'll just help our, our reserve there too.
I would like to, uh, let the rest of commissioners know, and also anyone that views this meeting in the future. Morton County has captured some additional funding because we've got our projects taken care of, and other counties have turned, uh, money that was earmarked, I believe, for the other counties, and they never got their projects started, and we're behind the eight ball. So we're doing the right things here, and we're capturing some additional state dollars, John, federal dollars?
Federal dollars.
Federal dollars. We're capturing because we're, uh, on top of our game, put it that way.
That comes on the highway department up there doing a good job.
We, we, the road, Paul and I on the road commission really push the staff up there to have things on the shelf, we call it, to make sure that if there's money that is up for grabs, um, we're ready to go with those projects.
I guess, Commissioner, I have a question about, uh, the Eagle, Eagle View.
Eagle View.
Uh, where, what we're, our plans are for that. It's quite a large bill.
Mm-hmm.
And is this something that, I assume it's sixty thousand for this year under number?
That's.
No, it's, that's spread out.
That's the increase, it's, um.
Programming fees, he had twenty-three and he went to eighty-three.
That was spread out, because that's spread over three.
I think if you look on the, if you flip a couple pages, he probably has it, um, yeah, he says,
Five.
Proposed addition of Eagle View has been quoted at a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, which payments spread over three years are approximately sixty thousand per year.
That's what it was.
So it's sixty thousand for three years for this, and then if they have to upgrade, I suppose, then he'll start all over.
It's, it's a large sum, um, but I'd also, I actually log on to Morton County parcels regularly, and I do mean regularly. Probably five times a week for various reasons, for my job, most of it. But, um, what I also talking with Don LaFleur on that particular program is the implementation, not only for, for the taxation, um, property tax information, for roads information, for the sheriff's department information, for emergency management information. All that can be applied with that one implementation of a resource. Uh, in addition to that is looking at the city of Madden that does have it, and they're actually increasing their resolution even more so because they're finding it that much more advantageous for their needs. So it, yes, it's a hefty sum, but we're also in the twenty-first century.
Sheriff Kirkmire, you think you can use it? Does it sound like something, has Don talked to you, and, I mean, I don't know. Emergency management definitely would use it.
Yeah.
We know that.
This is, it kinda gives you an, an overview of the property, you know, so you can, so if you did have an incident, we would, it could be used as to go back and get over, you look at this and you would have a, a broader view of, uh, all the overland features and that type of stuff, and it would be fairly easy to get to, you know, as far as looking at it.
You could pull it up as you're driving to the location almost, I guess.
It's, it's current, it gives the obliques versus a straight one-dimensional, which is what we currently have.
Um, so. And, and I don't know if I thought, and maybe, uh, Commissioner Morrell knows a little more about, I don't know if, well, they come out and they do the, they fly the whole county the first year, but I don't think they, do they do it every year? You know, that, that I'm not sure of, or, or do they just add on?
They do it every year, and that's where the update comes in.
For a five-year period, basically.
Yeah, for the program period.
Yeah.
Yep. And then in the event of, um, significant incident, and I'll just identify a flood, they will come out and do a, an overpass.
That area.
For that area, free of charge.
So they'd fly the whole Heart River if we had a major flooding incident, as soon as they could get here, so that we could see what's up, what damages and what, those kind of things.
And maybe it would give, you could probably, for the emergency management part, get a, a higher overview of it. Um, you know, and you can, I think, drill down to the, to the locations more, uh, with it too, so. I know it is spendy, but it's, uh, it is something that, that can be used.
What technology isn't spendy?
Right.
Anything I do.
I believe, I might be mistaken on this, but I believe with, uh, Don LaFleur was saying with, with the current implementation, the intent is go with a six-foot resolution. Whereas the city of Madden is actually, um, intensifying, there is going to a one-inch resolution.
Six inch, yeah.
Or six inch.
Six inch, yeah.
Yep. So it basically allows for that much more clarity, and right now, again, with our current implementation, our current, um, ArcGIS information, shoot, you're lucky to get five hundred feet.
ArcGIS is.
Yeah. Resolution's not there. It is.
It's old technology, and that's all there, it's not a bad technology, it's just old technology.
And this one is using LiDAR data, so it's, it's, makes it that much more realistic.
I had asked a question before on value proposition for this, uh, for Eagle View, and, and I did the big dollar amount, and I didn't, I don't believe we, I'll just put it this way, I, anytime we're spending money on large capital, or have large capital expenditures that we're proposing, I'd like all departments to provide some type of value proposition. What is a county getting out of this? And I have the same question. Are, are we, I know the software can be utilized by anyone within, uh, county government, which is good. But, uh, I'd like, uh, it to go beyond the tax department and be able to be used in, from other departments. And, uh, and to say, okay, here's our payback, we believe we can recoup these dollars that we're spending over a five-year period, or a two-year period, or whatever it happens to be. It's nice, I agree, uh, and I believe there is a payback on this, but, uh, just to spend money on a capital project because it's cool, that's not, that's not what we're here for. But I am in support of this.
Uh, don't know. I mean, that's kinda where we're up to. Those are the three that had big increases.
Bigger.
Four, with the road, sheriff's tax and state attorney. I think they need another one up there, but now is the time to do it, they dropped their budget too far.
Right.
And then have to bring it back. So we get that three percent, that's the under right now. Thank you, Kyle.
You bet.
I think it's a good thing, just work it in now instead of later, my opinion, but, because we are taking the decrease. Commissioners, have any other questions? Any of the other budgets that you wanna talk about? Um, like Auditor Roan said, we, we lock in or do our preliminary vote tonight on that number. It can't go up. However, we can still make adjustments down and shuffle money back and forth to stay at that number, so. There are some options that we need to probably really look at before we hit that October meeting.
So I guess I, I do have a question of you, Auditor Roan. So the sales tax, it was passed for the use of the jail, correct? Explain to me, I guess I'm not sure how that's worked.
Okay, so I mean, it funds first the jail, then the sheriff's department, and then the state's attorney, which they're all in the general fund. So the revenue just goes into the general fund. So on this, um, sheet that goes landscape.
Yes.
If you look at the, um, total estimated revenue, the thirteen point one million for twenty twenty-six, it's included in that number, along with property tax and state aid and all of our other money that we get that goes into the general fund.
Which line you looking at?
At the top?
General, yep, first line, general, and then the second column over total estimated revenue.
Yep.
Was this thirteen point one million.
Okay. So all of their budgets come out of the general fund?
Correct.
And so.
But again.
By where, then we're decreasing our general fund?
We're decreasing the property tax levy to support the general fund.
Okay, yes. So, so as it stands right now, in, in, in this presentation, the updated doc, and down at the bottom right corner, our tax, oh, our tax levy to, uh, proposed tax levy is ten million, eight oh four, seven ninety-two, which is actually a three point two million dollar decrease.
And that's because of the sales tax.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to make sure that I understood.
Yep. But actually, that's, that's a good chance for our listening public to understand that what we've working on right now. So that sales tax, which is paid by everybody that purchases within Morton County, visitors and residents alike, is helping reduce our property tax levies.
I do have one more question.
Sure.
Young subject, uh, of about, and that is with on, on the, the body cam part, I wanna make sure that, that you're thinking that that's gonna stay in? And because I need to start moving on doing some, some, uh, as far as getting demos and, and looking at the vendors and that type of thing before we get too late into this, so we can, so we can get it up and running in twenty twenty-six, so that's. Preliminary, what I'm thinking is making sure that where we're at with that, so, um, so I know what I need to do to move forward.
Okay.
What was first on your list, correct?
The body cams.
Yeah.
Yes, so.
That, the radios, the siren is, uh, obviously the big things we need to.
Those two.
And, and, uh, and if I may, I'll just give you a, a quick update here too, is that actually, uh, I did mention before that we use siren out at Country Fest, uh, we didn't have any issues, been working with the, uh, the, the state and state radio that we are looking to go to switch from, uh, VHF to siren September first. So, um, there'll be a big switch over. Um, I actually have a meeting with, on Tuesday, um, with, uh, the county fire department EMS, um, to get their radio program, to, to make sure they're all on the same page and they're ready for this. So the plan is, is that we're gonna go, uh, September first, we're gonna test it for thirty to forty-five days, that puts us in a timeframe of mid-October, and then we would start switching over fire departments and EMSs throughout the county. And that's kind of the role, uh, at the moment that we're at, and this has been a long time coming and trying to get to it, but, uh, we are getting closer.
How are your small fire departments coming along with? I know New Salem, he was adamant that this isn't gonna be able to afford it.
Yep, most of, well, actually, all of the, the fire departments and ambulances have the radios, single-band radios. So that's why we have to make sure when we switch, th- those agencies like the fire departments and EMS switches, because there's no going back then, you can't. You're no longer talking on the VHF system, so, uh, that's why we have to make sure, uh, that everybody's ready for it, we gotta have the, the talk agreements, uh, the sharing agreements, you know, between fire departments, so just as an example, uh, Madden, there'll be, there's one fire channel that's in this, uh, you know, Bismarck, basically Burley, Morton, Grant Talk Group that would, uh, one main fire channel, and then that's where they get paged off, that's where they, they first start, and then every agency has their own ops channel, basically.
Bam.
So New Salem will have, New Salem Ops, you'll have Glen Ellyn Ops, and you'll have New Salem, you know, that, that type of thing, or Hebron Ops, that they'll need to go to when they get to a scene, not to, not to tie up the main channel, each of them will have to go to their ops channel, but then there's gotta be sharing agreements between all of the different fire departments to make sure that they can do, everybody has their.
Interoperability.
They have to have the, the sharing agreements to be able to share their, uh, not really called channels anymore, they call, call them talk groups. You know, to share their talk groups with, with other agencies, other than the statewide mutual aid ones you have, but each agency, fire department has their own ops, which they have to share with other agencies to make sure. So for mutual aid, if New Salem calls for mutual aid from Madden or Earl or Glen Ellyn, they would go to the New Salem channel, and everybody would have the ability to, to do that. So everybody's on the same channel and not, because that, that's our biggest problem is communication now, and, and, and talking, and, and a lot of the radios are not working because of dead spots, hills, valleys, and that type of thing, but, uh, Siren has, uh, the, the testing that has been done, we ran the whole county, the whole border, and with portable and mobile, and it's, uh, we have very few dead spots, so. It, it's, uh, something to look forward to, to where we haven't had that, that type of communication available in the past, and we're hoping this solves a lot of problems.
So do all these small departments have the radios?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Yep. So, correct, and that's why, you know, with the meeting next week, is that we gotta get all these other departments to make sure that, one is that they know what's going on and they're ready to go by, uh, October, and having all of their talk groups and fleet maps are called to, together. So that can all be programmed, because every time you program a radio, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars. So these radios all have to get programmed, and it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a radio yet to, to program them, to get the final programming. And I don't want them, and I don't think they want to keep going back and forth. I mean, you wanna get this right the first time, so you don't have to keep reprogramming radios. And then we can do it, uh, the sheriff's office, we have Wi-Fi and group services on ours to where we can do it by Wi-Fi, and, and I'm working, uh, and that's the other part of the state, I'm hoping to get this done before the end of, uh, August here, is to have that, that Wi-Fi access point put up, and it's only for Siren, so you can only access, it's a secure encrypted channel that are, or that only that we can access, only the radios can access to update, so therefore, when we do radio updates, changing units, changing, I mean, they can all be done over Wi-Fi, and they don't have to physically touch them anymore. They just hit the button and it updates the, the radio, um, as we, as we go along, so. So that is also a big part of it.
So are we looking at that then the county road crew, that when they're, when will we be able to put theirs into service?
Yep, see, that's another thing, uh, and I'm glad you mentioned that. I think I sent Chad the invite for, yeah, so, okay. To, uh, to go to, um, because then they would be, after that October fifteenth, and where they fit in the schedule with everybody else, that could be done too. So once we switch and we get to that October, then everybody needs to switch, you know, at that point, which would include the highway department. So, talking that November.
Which again would help for, for winter response for. Which again would help for, for winter response, for storm response and they're on their own talk group.
Yep. And then the, the highway department would have their channel, uh, just as going forward, all law enforcement. So part of siren is that all law enforcement traffic has to be encrypted. So therefore, uh, fire departments, ambulances, highway department can no longer hear law enforcement traffic. So they can't come to our channel. So we have to have those channels in our radio because if we want to talk to the highway department, we got to switch and go to their channel because they can't come to ours. So it's...
You can go to them, but they can't come back to you.
Correct. Correct. So, and then that's just on, on the law enforcement side where that's all encrypted at this point, where the mutual aid ones, some of those are not. And then these other agencies, fire departments, highway departments, uh, EMS are not encrypted.
So what happens if there's an issue with, with the road department, there's a crash?
Mm-hmm.
How do they get, get to you then?
Uh, well, we, one is that if there's a crash, it would most likely go through 911 and get, you know, and then...
But if it's two road department vehicles?
Yeah. We'd, they would have to notify us.
Okay.
To, so we could switch. I mean, because we can, we can scan channels, but we don't want to scan. You can't scan too much because then it causes problems with what we, what you, I guess the important stuff you need to hear right away are the, the priority traffic, that type of thing. But no, we have to, we can all talk to each other, but, uh, you got to do it on the right talk.
Okay.
And again, the implementation of digital technology.
Yep. You know, and then, um, you know, what happens with VHF in the future and our, and the towers that we have on because paging is still going to have to go through VHF. So therefore all our towers and, and repeaters and stuff at this point need to be maintained because there is no big plan because a digital, uh, digital pager is about 800 dollars a shot, you know? And I don't know if the legislature at some point would come back and say, okay, to help some of the agencies out with the pagers like they did the, the radios. That, that is still yet to be determined. I guess we get past the first goal and then we got to get on what's going to happen with paging, uh, after that.
All right. Just a general feeling here that I don't think we were looking at the body cams or the sirens part of a shuffle or anything like that. It wasn't in my intention.
Yeah.
I'm looking at your list as top to bottom and, and seeing what we, if there's anything, but...
Well, the long story, the, of, I guess, the short story, long story, whatever, however you want to call it, but the, the main goal is, is that, uh, I want to make sure that you're pretty, you know, you're positive that that's going to stay in because one, that's very, very important to us and two, I need to move ahead with some stuff at this point, knowing that. If that makes sense.
Not a long story, not a short story. It is the story.
Yeah, the story, yeah. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you for the update, Kyle.
Commissioners, have any other questions?
Ready to motion?
Yeah, we can, like I said, we have options yet after tonight. It's just, uh, we have to do the preliminary tonight. And then from there we can, can't go up.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the preliminary budget for 2026 at 36,308,571 with a tax levy value at 10,804,792, which is a 3.251847 reduction over 2024 of the tax levy.
Mm-hmm. I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to approve the preliminary budget of 36, a working budget of 36,308,571 with a tax levied of 10 million, excuse me, 10,804,792, which is a decrease of 3,251,847 from 2024. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Commissioner Morrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmyer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries. Um, the one other thing in the packet that Don, you gave us was the opinion.
I didn't.
Where'd that come from? It's in our pack.
That might've, might've come from the state's attorney's office. I was just...
Did you bring it down, Al?
Huh?
Yeah.
Okay. I was going to mention that just to see.
Go ahead. You talk about it.
So again, at the last commission meeting, Sheriff Kirkmyer was entertaining the, the need for, um, soliciting bids for work with the law enforcement center and the authorization was to move forward pending the state's attorney's opinion regarding advertisement for bids. And the result from the state's attorney's opinion is that in fact, in accordance with century code, they would have to be advertised for a bid. So invite the, the sheriffs to work with, uh, state's attorney's office and Auditor Roan as far as proper advertising for the bid presentation and then move forward after that. But again, the advantage that we have is we know what those dollars are right now. So that if anything, we're saving money.
Okay. With that, the next item on the agenda is our public comment period. Um, there's nobody online, Lacy, and there is no one other than department heads in here that they want to say something. So I guess we won't have that public comment period this evening. You want to call it three times?
Yep.
Okay. Any public comment? That's, any public comment. Seeing none, we will close that comment, comment period. Does anyone have anything good for the order?
Motion to adjourn.
And move to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you all.